Okay, and we're being recorded, everybody. So Diane, who do we have on the call? Can you just run down the role?
We have Trish, Pete, Mike, Nancy, Charlie, Tina, Kate, Matt, Jack Kozak, Terry, Lisa, Larry.
I just signed on.
Who was that?
Chief El Cadenino.
Okay.
Who was the Mike? Mike Jewett?
Yeah, Mike Jewett, yes.
Okay, cool. All right, so we're gonna turn it over, as we always do at the beginning, to Trish. Trish, if you could give us the rundown. A lot of stuff happened today, again, so.
Yes, absolutely. So we actually had two calls. We had one yesterday that was a last minute, somewhat emergency call that they decided to do to let us know about the potential of compiling some kind of a data list that could be given to first responders, letting them know if there's a positive patient that they may be en route to. So there was a lot of talk about it. They've come up with a way that we can, and I shouldn't say "we", that the Health Department and the AG's office and the fire and the police have all agreed upon. And in doing so, there are an MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding. It's a confidentiality agreement. And the way this is gonna work is Rockingham Dispatch, who dispatches to, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, chiefs, twenty-six or twenty-seven towns. They are gonna be the ones that are compiling this data. As calls come in and somebody tests positive, so it's not potential, this is positive, with all the positive symptoms, they're gonna have the name of that person, they're gonna have maybe the date of the test, if there was one, or the date the investigation first started, the address of that person. And then a code word will be agreed upon, maybe individually by departments. That's probably a work in progress right now among the local communities. But the code would be something used so that the people responding are gonna know from Rock Dispatch that there is a positive person at the address. The memorandum of understanding is gonna be signed between Rock Dispatch and the Health Department, and they're gonna list all the communities that they service. So Rock Dispatch is gonna be the ones that have this list. They went on to say if the town wants the list, and I shouldn't say "the town", because the town will not get a list. It's either gonna be the police and fire and maybe EMS, maybe EMD. It's not for public, so it's not gonna be something the town has access to. But it will be a secure list that is gonna be purged actually every twenty-one days. And the police department, fire department, Larry, EMS, I'm not sure. They would all get their own Box.com site, and it is free as long as you don't go over a certain amount of data. And Rock Dispatch is willing to input, slip in the data daily as they get it into that particular drop, not Dropbox, but Box.com for the police and fire. They talked a lot about how this information is private. We can't violate HIPAA, that this isn't, it can't be downloaded from the secure site. It can't be put into like an Excel spreadsheet. It's really just to protect the first responders. There was a little bit of talk about the code word that could be used. Somebody said, should it be like universal amongst all of us? And another person came on and said, yeah, but eventually the public's gonna figure out what that code word means. And it was very interesting. The answer was, but ultimately, they're trying to protect our first responders. And that's the whole purpose of this. So that our men and women are gonna know when they're going to a call, are they suiting up in PTEs, or is it, you know, maybe a broken arm that they don't need to suit up for? What's the call? So again, there's gonna be a code word, and probably both chiefs will get together so that they each know what they're saying. And I don't know if mutual aid will also use the same ones, but that's gonna be worked out. They stressed and stressed that this is confidential. Then they said that the town, and again, I shouldn't say "town", that if the police or fire or the EMS or the EMD, whoever is wanting Rock to input that data into their own Box.com account, they will have to sign a separate memorandum. So the first memorandum is from Rockingham Dispatch, listing the towns they service and the health agent. And the second MOU will come from, I'm gonna use as an example, the fire chief or the police chief, that they will sign it. So that agreement is between them and Rockingham Dispatch. Because the original agreement says they won't share the information, which is why we really need two MOUs signed. So again, there was an awful lot of talk about that. Matt was on the call, both chiefs were on the call, Larry was on the call. So, and maybe even Bob Leveron, I didn't ask if he was. But there's a lot of information about that, and then it was going to be discussed again at today's call. So it started out today with, first they discussed the homeless, that there are some towns that they've got two issues going on. They have homeless that need to be quarantined, and they have homeless that need housing so that maybe they won't be infected by those that are. So they have a way to take care of both of these situations. And they also said that if the town needs help, if we've got some of these issues going on, to call the EOC line. Then they talked about the surge centers. Again, large-scale emergencies that sometimes means smaller communities can't handle them. They're working on MOUs and the funding for that. And they're looking on ongoing costs and making sure that we're keeping track of all our invoices. Larry had me check in with Kim Hughes today so that we've got all our paperwork so we can actually start doing that, starting tomorrow. They reminded us that they're trying to get assistance from the federal government and to make sure everything's marked COVID ID, uh, COVID nineteen, rather. Then there was more talk about the memorandums of understanding for the data of the secure site, and again, how this is gonna be handled. And originally on yesterday's call, and Matt and both chiefs will probably remember this, it started out saying that Rock Dispatch was the only one that needed to sign this memorandum. But then later on in the conversation, somebody said, oh, well, the individual towns will have to sign a separate one. And then they said they were gonna give us a separate one. So there was a lot of confusion about that. So on today's call, I asked that specific question. You know, who is signing this MOU? And is it correct that either the police, fire, EMD, whoever wants their own Box account to be dropped with data, do they have to sign their own? And they said, absolutely. And I said, well, when I say "they", does the selectmen sign as the governing body, or who signs it? And they said, the selectmen actually can't sign it because they aren't privy to this information. This is just first responders and completely confidential. And that our MOUs, as both chiefs and Larry probably already know, once they're signed, they are sent to Rock. So that allows Rock to share that information with them. They stressed and stressed again about confidentiality and not sharing things. Those of you that were on the call, you know, feel free to weigh in. But it was extremely important that we paid attention to that. They also said that we had eight positive tests of first responders, and we have seventy-nine in quarantine. They say they're working with the public health to, for the process with first responder test notifications. There seemed to be a problem. A first responder was tested, and it didn't go to the special lab. It went to the commercial lab. So now there's a huge lag time in us getting that response back, so that was an issue. They're working on tracking social media. There's a lot of social media out there that is causing questions. It's actually giving wrong information. So they're gonna keep an eye on that, and I don't know how they're gonna handle it, but I'm sure they'll keep us informed. We've got some alternate care sites, wellness and safety, going on. They wanted to know, again, about crisis counseling. And they actually said that they are working on that, and it's gonna come out in something, well, they said today, but we have.
Hello?
Yep. Trish, I think something happened?
Yeah. Just when it was getting good. So we lost Trish. Maybe she'll call back in, unless she's on mute or something like that?
Um, let me check her. No, I think she got, she dropped somehow, or, no, she's still here, according to this.
Oh, really? Bad statement. Everybody remember where she left off. But one thing I would mention, and I'll give the floor back to Trish if she rejoins. But as we know, and the governor's chief health official announced it today about the, they're going to debut townwide maps. So, for instance, HHS will pump out there on a regular basis a map of the towns, and if Newton has any, it'll say Newton two, Newton zero, whatever it is. I would, and this is just me speaking, and I'm hoping the board shares my concern, I would guard against us presenting this as any information that we're privy to as a governing board in the town or as anything else. Because I don't wanna get into this position where people are going to be asking us, how many are we up to today? Do you know where they are? I hear there's three on Kenwood. Can you confirm? You know, that sort of thing. My most important thing to me, because personally, I don't even wanna know how many are in this town. What's most important to me is that the first responders are protected. And if this information that Trish is talking about in that database helps protect them, then I'm all for it. Otherwise, I believe we should send people to HHS. So if they're putting it on their website, anybody asks about it, that's where we point them. We don't know anything more than that. So, comments on that?
I am back. I'm back.
Okay.
I don't know what happened. My house, yeah, I heard what you said. I called from my cellphone. So, um, you're absolutely right. I don't know where I was when my phone killed me. So where was I?
I think you were at...
Right around crisis counseling.
Yeah, good.
Counseling, okay. So I was right at the end, then. It just talked about, you know, crisis counseling. And they actually are going to continue to refine what they're calling social distance. And they're talking about room occupancies and checkpoints. And also trying to set up more food, food setup for mental health resources. They did say more hospitals are being set up in Littleton, Nashua North, and Dartmouth. And I heard at the last minute, Nashua South may be set up, but I haven't seen that in writing yet. And that's about it. And I think what I heard Matt say, even though I was kind of on silent, I could hear you guys, I don't know why you couldn't hear me, but you're right. Be careful what you're putting out there on social media. It's causing more problems. And the minute you put out something on social media, all of a sudden, you're the source or the resource. And really, like Matt said, we need to be sending them to the state. And I think that's it, Matt, thank you.
Thank you for that update. Go ahead, I think it was Kate?
Uh, no, Tina, I have a question for Trish.
Go ahead.
Regarding the homeless issue?
Yes.
Did they say, are they still funneling them through 211? Or is there a new number to put them through?
Uh, still go through 211 and they'll help you.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, any questions for Trish in regards to the update she just gave us? The, you know, probably one of the most important updates we've had since we last talked to each other is the governor's, or the president has us until at least April 30th doing social distancing, and the governors get the schools closed to at least May 4th. So if I was a betting man, I wouldn't see the schools reopening this year, but that's just me. So what I did wanna just go through, I have a list just real quick. We, this is not COVID related, but the board of selectmen, as they know, they have something in their email inbox from today. We have to review a non-public. I'd like to propose that we do that on Wednesday in a non-public, if the board is okay with that?
Hi, I'm Matt.
Yep, I am.
Awesome, thanks. And any, any way we could start the non-public earlier for the board? Does the board, it's five, five-thirty, is that too early?
Nope.
Nope.
Not for me. So split it in 5:00 PM? You can do 5:30, okay.
So, how's 5:30 sound, everybody?
Good.
Okay.
Good.
So, let's flip this upside down then, 'cause I don't... Actually, yeah, let's do 5:30. I think we can get it done in a half hour. There are two hiring things we need to do as well. But Diane, can we keep the public at six?
Okay.
In a 5:30 non-public?
Okay, yep, I'll update the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so we put out there, or I put it out there through Diane, as I just mentioned a minute ago, we're looking at long-term now. I think when we closed everything down a couple of weeks ago, we're thinking short-term. So long-term, six, eight weeks probably isn't out of the realm of possibility. So I wanted to get an idea from department heads. And this is not something we have to go over right now, but I wanted to collect department heads' concerns as we move forward, kinda long-term, the way we're working. So Diane, did you get any inputs from, you don't have to name names, but did you get any inputs from department heads?
Yes, I did. I forwarded it to the board of selectmen.
Okay. I haven't seen it yet, but is it pretty comprehensive of the departments?
I believe, yes, I believe so. I mean, it gives you each, what each department, concerns and, the concerns basically, and their information.
Cool, so maybe the board can, can read up on that. And then on Wednesday, we can, can approach that subject again. Diane, you had a couple of things on the list for today?
Yep. Yes, I do. Lisa has the numbers for the manifest. If you wanna do that, then you can just go in and sign it tomorrow, maybe? So you can get Lisa to do her motion.
I will move to sign vendor manifest dated March 30th, 2020 in the amount of $874,267.25, of which $777,877 goes towards the April Sandborne Regional School District payment, and $88,575.0 goes to payment number six of seven. So we're almost done. For the Eight Merrimack Road, for the 2012 Town Warrant Article Number Six.
Second. Are we getting a discount from Sandborne right now? That was a joke. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so I heard Larry, Lisa, and Charlie say aye, Kate, Kate's an aye, and I'm aye.
I was aye, I was muted, okay.
No problem. Five, nothing, Diane. Another one for you, Lisa, I think, on the list?
I will move to sign payroll manifest for pay period March 15th through 28th, 2020, with a pay date of April 2nd, 2020.
Second on that?
Second.
Charlie, one? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then the next... Okay, the next thing of the minutes from March, let's see, March 25th, which was last Wednesday, and that's just public minutes.
Still move?
Who was that?
Is there Charlie? Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Lisa's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right, we're all in favor. Anything else on your list, Diane?
The only other thing was I wanted to know about your April 7th meeting, if we're going to just stick to audio conferencing?
So that's for the board to weigh in here. I think from now until further notice, I think we should be audio only.
Agreed.
Agree.
Okay.
Agree. And this is a good audio, whatever this is.
Yeah, this is a good one. So here's the only thing for you on the cable committee hat, Diane, is is there any way of capturing the public audio and posting it to the website for the people who are used to watching a video?
Well, I have been capturing most of them. So I do have, I have from March 20th all the way up to today. And I can just post them, I guess, as an audio clip. I mean, there will be, yeah. Yeah.
So why don't we pursue that?
I'll look and see how that works.
Great. Okay, so, anything at the top?
Yeah, do we know what the planning board is doing?
Was that...
How they're handling COVID-19? You know, meetings, things like that?
Can I speak for a sec?
Go Nancy.
Yeah, I think Jim and Roger have been in contact with Jennifer at RPC. And they were going to have a conference call as to how they can maybe move forward, but I haven't heard anything from any of them since then. That was last week.
I can answer something on that as well. So I worked with Jim and Roger today, who's on the conference call, and worked out the, you know, the button, and showed Jim how to use some of the stuff. So it looks like they'll be moving forward with the, what we're using here with their phone number.
Okay, great. 'Cause I know people are wondering what they're doing, and it's only, that and ZBA would be another one that, you know, how, is ZBA making plans for, you know, how they're going to meet without physically meeting?
Jack Kozak is on. Jack, have you had any discussions about that? Probably not, right? Not yet? Jack might be on mute. I do believe there will be a secretary for ZBA in the loop here shortly. So that might be something Diane can reach out to that secretary to get her up to speed, so.
Well, the issue, yeah, I suppose they could try it, yeah.
Well, once, once it's all signed on the dotted line.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that we've covered all of the, not just departments, but all of the boards, so that all of the information is on the website for the residents to say, what about planning board? What about ZBA? What about conservation? What about recreation? And so that each department has a notice on the website. We are postponing meetings until such and such a time, we'll be having, you know what I'm saying? I think it's important that we encourage all of the boards to do this.
Hey, hello, this is, hey, this is Jack Kozak. Someone was talking about the Board of Appeals. Sorry to interrupt. I, I went to click off my mute, and I actually ended the call. Tom and I talked about a week, week and a half ago, and we're gonna cancel the ZBA meeting because the crowds we've had at the last couple of hearings on this particular issue we're dealing with, there's been as many as forty or fifty people there. So we're gonna cancel April's meeting.
You guys are way too popular. So the, the only thing to consider, Jack, and we'll, we'll share this with the secretary that'll hopefully be in place soon, is the governor has created an exception to the public meeting requirement. So you guys, if you need to, you could meet over the phone, like we're doing right now. And everybody could be on the phone, even the applicant could be on the phone. And they could somehow share whatever plans in advance, you know. You know, US mail, whatever you figure out. But it's probably a good idea to cancel the next one.
Yes, definitely, April, and then we can see if we can work out for May, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So, but just something to think about, but.
Yeah, yeah, I, I will stop and talk, talk to Tom sometime in the next couple of days, and, and who would Tom contact to, to figure out how to get this thing set up, Matt?
We're, we're gonna turn Diane in for that, so.
Okay.
Tom calls Diane, Diane can, right. She's very reachable these days, so.
She is the S M E on this process.
I know, yeah. Whether she likes it or not. So the, and I, I can tell you, Recreation is not gonna meet probably until May, if they, if then. There's nothing on Recreation's deck that is of, you know, obviously is of a need right now.
Could I talk about conservation?
Go for it.
Okay, sorry. Ordinarily, I wouldn't say there's much important things that we have to deal with. But unfortunately, Earth Day is in April. And because we're usually very proactive on Earth Day, we voted, proved, and bought, with Nancy's credit card, we bought these wonderful little Earth Day potted plants with soil lavender, adorable little containers, that of course are shipped here. And I have them sitting in my living room, and I don't want these poor things to die. So I spoke to Conservation Shareperson to see if they would mind at least having a Zoom meeting or something so we could vote on what you want me to do with these. And my question, and probably this is for Diane and the board, I have a Zoom account. The only thing is, really, that's not accessible to the public. So it would be great if I had a number that we could use so the public could at least listen if they wanted to, while the board, the committee tells me what to do with these plants.
You mean a telephone number, like this one?
Right, if that could be set up so that we could do that. 'Cause my Zoom account isn't gonna allow the private, the public to see it.
So the, the thing we need to start thinking about, Diane, is maybe, maybe for the frequently meeting boards, like the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, they have their own numbers. But maybe you establish a kind of a number by appointment, you know, that Conservation can use it, and then, you know, ZBA next, and that, that sort of thing. Just something to think about.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so if I can be, I'll have to look into, 'cause I already use my email. So we may have to use somebody else's email, but I'll have to look into that.
You can use my email, Diane.
Who, who's that?
Lisa.
Okay.
So, just, just to know... Yeah, just to know, Lisa, what you're gonna get is you're gonna get, like, you know, statuses and all that stuff, and junk mail, obviously, but you're gonna...
Yeah, that's what the email rules are for.
Yeah, right.
And it should actually be the person taking the minutes, using an email that they have, and they can get all the reports and attach it to the email. I mean, attach it to the minutes with what I've been doing.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, but if it's going to be a shared... Yeah, but if it's going to be a shared email for like Conservation and ZBA and potentially Recreation, if it goes on that long, then which secretary would get that email?
Well, what I'm thinking is they each get their own.
Each get their own.
Yeah, they are free.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So great.
That would be the best way.
Yeah, it sounds good. All right, COVID-19, anybody have any other concerns for tonight on this call before we hang up?
Matt, I've got one thing that I need to say. Is, does the ZBA have a... Huh?
Huh? Hello?
Yep.
Uh, Charlie, go ahead.
Okay.
Charlie?
Does the Z, does, yeah, does the ZBA have enough money to turn around and do the, uh, new notices and the paper notices? In the newspaper? Because they have to re-notify it, and we have to pay for it.
Charlie, can I answer that?
Sure can.
Um, we, so we covered this on the conference calls, and maybe Matt already knows this. But we talked specifically about Planning Board and ZBA. And if anything was kind of in the queue, and then because of this, it didn't happen, they made it perfectly clear that the, um, applicant would not be charged, the town is going to have to pay for it.
Right, that's what I thought.
So, so, you know, whether it comes from, you know, an individual account, or if it's going to have to come out somewhere else, either way, it has to be paid by the town if we have to redo it.
Okay, because that's something that's, you know, she's going to, she's going to have to do in the next couple of weeks, if they put it off until May.
Hey, can I interrupt? Hey, Charlie, it's going to be a continuation of a previous meeting. So that when the, when the notification goes out, I'm not sure how it will be worded and so forth.
You, you still, you still have to notify it.
Yeah, whether, whether your butt is... Yeah.
Well, you, you have to.
Even, even on a continuation, Charlie, of a, a cancel of a meeting?
Because you canceled the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
So like, Larry jumped in there and said, Larry said, "Save the invoices and make sure they're noted somewhere, this is COVID-19." And unfortunately, we'll have to work it out at the end.
Can I speak, please?
Yep.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Um, what Jim did for Planning Board was he sent out regular notices by regular mail, doesn't have to be certified, letting everybody know it's continued. So that way, you know, we pay for that, but at least the, um, the meeting isn't canceled. If you cancel now, you have to do all those, um, certified mail deliveries all over again.
Right, that's why I was asking, because you said it was going to do it, thinking about canceling it.
No, he said continuing it, and the letters can go out to all of the people, letting them know it's continued to a future date, whatever that might be. Does that make sense?
That's okay. Yep, yep.
Is there any, Nancy, is there any time period in that, 30 days? Do you have any extended time on that?
I would say they should do it immediately, so there's no repercussions. They gotta, they gotta know well in advance.
Okay. So you're saying we could do it just through regular mail, because it's a continuance?
Yep, just regular mail, because you're not canceling it, you're continuing it.
All right, I, I will stop by and see Tom tomorrow morning and let him know.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good one. Okay, any, anybody else, uh, COVID-related? All right, so...
One thing.
Larry?
I think tomorrow, um, we're going back to Conca to get some more PPE equipment, but they didn't tell me what it was.
When you say they didn't tell you what it was, they don't know what they have, they're...
They just say your order's ready.
Your order's ready.
Yeah, they just say the order's ready, and that's it, that's all they tell you.
Okay. Okay.
I, I have two bottles of, uh, Matt, Charlie.
Go ahead.
Matt, I, I have two bottles of sanitizer, one for the fires and one for the police, that I'm going to deliver tomorrow. Deb Thompson got it.
Oh, great. Was it from a distillery or something?
I don't know where she got it, but I, I think she did get it from a distillery.
Great, yeah, a lot of them are doing that.
Yep.
Awesome. All right, that'll be helpful. Um, anybody else? All right, so, um, I don't think I ever called the meeting open, let's call that 601. So at 6:36, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That was Charlie, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Larry wins that one, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, I think that was five ayes. So appreciate everyone's time. Anybody needs anything in the next couple of days, you know how to get ahold of me. But, um, thank you very much, and we'll talk soon. Good night.
Take care.
See ya. Good night, everybody. Thank you, good night.